Good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending the Webster Board of Education meeting. At this point, before we open, can I ask for a motion to move into executive session? By Maria, second by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We'll be back shortly. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Webster Center School District Board of Education meeting this December 7th. Would everyone please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please, to move out of executive session? Shanna, second.
In a second.
Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
All, thank you. The agenda requires no alterations, so we will begin with liaison reports, if those with reports would like to come forward. Thank, everyone, for joining us in our new surroundings here at Thomas. Kind of a mobile Board of Education.
Okay. That's right.
We'll get you another seat.
Thank, another, okay.
We've got lots of chairs.
Give everybody a second to get situated. Thank you all. And whoever would like to begin?
Hello, my name is Lauren and Yolona, oh, oh, hold on. Hello, my name is Lauren and Yolona Charisma, and we will be presenting with you all for tonight, and I also hope that you all had a great Thanksgiving break. Now getting into it, during our Thanksgiving break, our upperclassmen assisted with helping to serve our community at the House of Mercy. Thank you to Alyssa R., Aubrey, Jay, and Alex, as well as to Ms. Cox Poole for helping and assisting us in giving back to our community. Now, into club activities, our math league had their monthly meeting last month scoring up to 58 points. Congratulations to the following: Jack R. scoring 14 points, Justin B. scored eight points, and Aiden P., Najla S., Shaylan Z., Luke S., and Carly K. scored seven points, respectively. Congratulations to you. Now, for our school stream club, students had the opportunity to go to Rock, to the Rock to Change event, which is what I was a part of recently, and it had, it was filled with many other clubs that had the same visions and goals as ourselves to end and to have racial equality and equity in our city and our world. Some of the topics that we discussed included racial microaggressions that you may see in the classroom, or a student may, or a student like myself may have experienced, or one of the main topics that we talked about was about white woman's missing syndrome, which is basically like a thing where a Caucasian or a white female in per se would be looked at nicer, or have nicer pictures of themselves on the news when they are shown missing versus like a, like a mugshot or something like that is similar to that, or you would have a, verse, vice versa, you would have a black or indigenous woman shown maybe with like a stab mark maybe shown on the news, and they'll show their families maybe in a sad photo, but that's not who they really are, and they'll show in words disturbing facts or things that may convey them to look as if they were the bad person in the situation when they could have gotten killed during that time when they were missing. So, that was one of the main topics for that day, and if you are interested, our school's group Ties, which means together, including every student, has our next meeting this Friday from 3:00 to 4:00. If you'd like more information, you can go and see Ms. Mayshag. And going into the musical side of things, our school select choir, which I'm a part of, had the opportunity to sing at the Riverside Convention Center for the NISMA convention that was held. My choral director, Ms. Brenda Nitch, got an award for not only being the best choral director, but for all of her hard work and dedication that she has put into our program. Congratulations, Ms. Nitch, and I cannot thank you enough for the opportunity that I was given, and so many other students to sing at such a prestigious event. Now, I'll be turning to, over to Charisma.
Hi. Hi, thank you, Lauren. Hello, everyone. Going into academics, students got the opportunity to apply to MCC, and it was a huge success. Over 30 students are now looking forward to their first walk-through of the campus in the spring to hopefully call their new educational environment, as well as a new home. Our sophomore geotech classes have been getting together to finish the new outside classroom for DeWitt. If you remember, the project was originally started in 2019 through to the 2020 school year. Students are now finishing it with the awesome project and will soon give a detailed presentation at the next Board of Ed meeting. Thank you to Mr. Toch, to, I can't say it, to True, Tucharello, yes, Tucharello, and Mr. Mangoes and Mrs. Abby. Also, a huge thank you to the guidance and cooperation of our Buildings and Grounds Department. We cannot wait to see what the future holds for their next project. If you have a sophomore or know anyone that is a sophomore, then this is the, this is for you. The next EMCC in-person visit is on December 10th, and we hope to see you there. Also, our math lab is open every day for every student now. We would like to congratulate our mad, oh, my goodness, we would like to congratulate our amazing December students and staff of the month. Maya R. in 9th grade, Kenyon L. in 10th, Ella H. in 11th, Nurgis T. in 12th, and Mrs. Warren. We are so proud of them. Don't forget to tune in this month's winter concerts. The first concert was yesterday. The second concert will be on December 13th at 7:00 p.m., and the third concert will be on December 20th at 6:30. Going into sports, our winter sports are beginning with a great start. The girls' bowling team won their first game against Canada Ego 4-1, and the boys' bowling team won their first match against Canada Ego as well. The Webster Thomas Wrestling Team took the win in a dual meet versus Webster Schrader, and the Thomas Titans Hockey Team won against Canada Ego 3-2. Our athletes are very excited about the next season. Thank you for listening. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. So, Brooke and I have some really exciting news to share with you all tonight, so let's just jump right in. The first thing to share is Schrader's recent reboot of Sources of Strength, which is super exciting, because a couple years ago, our school identified some peer leaders, and we held a meeting and a training day, but because of COVID, obviously, those efforts were kind of canceled into the 2020 school year, but we recently had our second training day at Spry, and I know I saw Mr. Neen in there, and a bunch of other administrators and teachers, and it was really just a great time for everyone involved. Also, our winter sports are kicking off soon, which is great. Our fall seasons were super successful, and we can't wait to see how our winter teams do. A Link crew event recently took place, where freshmen played board games and had some popcorn. Overall, it was just a super fun event. Link leaders got to play things like Yahtzee, and we even held a big group game of Family A report from Mrs. Miller, who is our math league instructor, we recently completed our second successful competition, and we even had one student, Jaclyn H., get her second perfect score of the year, which is very impressive. And then, also at Schrader, we had Brockport Instant Decision recently, and Brooke, Victoria, Evelyn H., Erin R., Irina D., Lexi A., Hope D., Varun E., Jack D., Sydney T., Juliana F., and Theo G. were all accepted. And just on colleges in general, we've had a lot of students apply for early decision and early admission, which is great to see. Some people are already getting their letters of acceptance back, and this is in no small part thanks to our amazing counselors and also Mrs. Streggy, who helps revise all of our essays. Also, from Mrs. Goodwine, we recently held the Colin Montesano Blood Drive at Schrader on Saturday, November 27th, and the drive raised 87 units of blood, which can actually help up to 258 patients in need. So that was very successful. And then, like Thomas, our dream club recently attended the Rock to Change Conference. Next year, Webster even plans to officially sponsor the conference, and that's all for me, so I'm gonna pass it off to Brooke.
Let's see if I can get it close enough. Okay. Hi, everyone. Our music department is getting ready for their winter concerts. The band is having their concert tonight, on the 9th. The Symphonic Orchestra is performing, and on the 15th, the Jazz Ensemble, Select Choir, and Philharmonic Orchestra are all performing. Good luck to all performers, we know you'll do great. Mr. Christman would like to take a moment to thank the Board of Education for taking the time to see the Schrader Theater Company showcase. The group really appreciated seeing them seeing our students' performance, and our student actors shared that our show for the Board at the district office was their favorite performance of the day. Earlier this month, counselors Martha Henry and Alyssa Ostrander attended the New York State Counselor, New York State School Counseling Association's annual conference and presented a breakout session titled "How to Talk So People Will Listen." It was well-attended, and they received lots of positive feedback. The Webster Schrader Speech and Debate Team has had a strong start to the virtual year. Schrader took second place at a recent Genesee Valley Forensic League competition with a small but mighty squad, including first-place finishers MSC in Original Oratory, and JCS and Russell G. in Duo Interpretation. Freshmen Yi J. and Sam O. took second place, third place in Lincoln Douglas Debate. Sophomore Noah J. took second place in Extemporaneous Speaking, and the team of Michael and Tristan B. took second place in Public Forum Debate. National Honor Society members wrote out over 250 gratitude cards to give to local veterans and to the veterans in our building for Veterans Day. Students shared that writing the cards was a small token of appreciation to give the veterans who gave up so much for their country. Schrader has just begun the process to form a National Art Honor Society, N-A-H-S, which is an honor society for students involved in art. This honor society brings attention to art in our school and community, as well as recognizes students with excellent art ability. N-A-H-S is looking forward to serving both our local and school communities through service projects. Members are working on getting the club officially approved. Student Council is preparing for our annual winter week. Our theme days include Comfy Cozy Day, Winter Character Dress-Up Day, Flannel Day, and Ugly Sweater Day. Student Council will be serving hot chocolate one day during lunch. Additionally, Student Council and International Club have teamed up to do a school-wide toiletry competition. Each fourth block class will be collecting toiletries, which will be donated to refugees. Whichever class collects the most toiletries, creating the biggest tower, will win a party. Some of our Spanish classes took a field trip today to see the new Disney movie Encanto. Encanto follows the story of the Matrigal family in Colombia. Encanto is critically acclaimed for its cultural representation of Colombia. These cultural references will help enrich our students' knowledge on Colombian culture. Thank you so much for your time. We wish you all a safe and happy December.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much, and I do have to say, the acoustics seem to be much better here at Thomas, and we can hear every word that you're sharing with us. We appreciate very much that you share your evenings with us. Thanks again.
Great job. Happy holidays, everyone.
Same to you. Thank you. Thank you.
How are you all? A little visual, you know.
Oh. She always has a time.
I can see this, I cannot see that. Our computers went down. All right, so we're gonna go. They did amazing, they're so good. All right, good evening again, everyone, and hope you're all doing well. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna go there. All right, we're gonna start off with, we're gonna start off with our oldest and our youngest, and how they came together. At Schrader, our WTA members, our Universal Pre-K, and our psych classes got together to do some observing. The seniors and juniors who take the psycholectives were able to learn some things on the cognitive and developmental and gender, and went down and watched the Universal Pre-K kids. They thought they were gonna watch, but, you know, pre-K, they have different ideas. So they really got involved with it, and while some of the observations and the summaries and the feedback from kids, the teachers were so pleased, and so were the students. So there was really cool activity to do with our youngest and our oldest. During the month of November, you guys know November 13th was our World Kindness Day, and we've been for ages preaching random acts of kindness, purposeful acts of kindness, and DeWitt just took this on a whole new level, across the district, we did. But DeWitt, some of the activities included collecting socks, books, mittens, hats, they, food, they went to Hope House, they went to the Jewish House of Rochester, they went to Maplewood Nursing Home, they went to, they made music videos, they really took it to a whole new level. So kudos to them and all the WTA members and all the other bargaining units that, we all have to collaborate, we do. We have to plan, we have to figure out what we're doing, whether it's music, the arts, our English, our math, and figure out who's doing the writing, who's doing the singing, what pieces we'll go with what. Our librarians play a huge role in the new books and pieces that go with them and the different authors. So again, kudos to DeWitt. Our collections and deliveries are made at every level, and if you walk through the buildings, and I know you guys have, you see them. You see them in the blue house, the gold house, the yellow house, the green house, the cafeterias, they're collecting monthly, and we also know there's gonna be some special deliveries by some people at this table right now, and I don't want to, I don't wanna share too much, but I just want to make you aware that there is a passion in this district, no matter who people are in schools. There are many things that are being done very quietly and very passionately, and people will find things at their doorsteps that, whether it's food, or presents, or just some gift cards, that will make this holiday season just a little bit more bearable for some, because that is the truth and the reality, and more joyous and happy for others. So, WTA members, we really appreciate not only what we are doing, but what everyone else in our community and our school district is doing. Our know the, worthy, our other worthy items that we would love to share is Jen and her cross-country team at Spry were giving out pumpkins after their 6th grade pumpkin run, and then Schrader and their physics department figured out how to launch those pumpkins. So we both entered the spectrum again. Furthest pumpkin went about 18 meters, which I understand to be almost about 57 feet. So there were prizes for those pieces. Our WTA, Dan Crowley's amazing. We are in doing the backpack program again with Emmanuel Lutheran, we do it each year. We had a fabulous October drive that we had, but then COVID hit, so we had to find other ways to collect. So that is going on right now, where we focus in on working together and keeping sure that there are certain foods that they need, that they run low on, and there will be, Dan will probably make three to four trips around the 11 buildings and then over to the church. He will probably bring numerous members, and they will be collecting each year. And we also know that there are other members from other bargaining units that drop off into the faculty rooms, the peanut butter and the raviolis and the pasta and the things that the Emmanuel Lutheran Church really needs to get out there to our backpack program. Our Women's Committee, Jen Hayfee, boy, she is recognized on every level again and again and again. She just spent a weekend at the state level talking about different issues and concerns, and then really had a focus on some empowering activities that we're going to be sharing in the near future. As well as come January and February, there will probably be, we are going to be running a purses for a purpose, so if anybody has some old purses or gently-used purses that they would like to donate, keep that in mind for after the holidays. We will be sharing those with downtown and people in the area. Our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, we are being active on that, as well our WTA members, and we look forward to the future plans and problem-solving along the way and treating all as very valuable and honoring our differences and celebrating our differences. Our partnership with the PTSA, it runs deep. The parade was awesome. Every month, there seems to be something that just gets stronger and stronger and more cool. It really does. And I just wanna end this with Brian, Chris Wojcze, and all our building principals really made an in-person delivery of a cookie and a cup of coffee, and it was great. WTA appreciate, noticed, appreciates, and values everyone. So we thank you, we wish you a very happy, healthy holiday season, and we look forward to seeing you in January with bigger font.
Thank you, Joan.
Thank you so much, Jen. Happy holidays to you too, and your family.
Moving on to instructional reports, we have the superintendent's report and campus news.
All right, now I'll ask Mark and Jackie if you would like to come on up and take your spots. I'll start as you guys are walking up. All right, I'd like to begin my report tonight with a reminder to families of our youngest learners-to-be. If you have children residing in your household who are birth to five years old, please complete the brief census that is linked on our website at websterschools.org in the news section. The census will be used to help forecast student enrollment, and it closes on Sunday, January 9th, 2022. God, that's hard, it's strange to say 2022, holy cow. If you do not have access to a computer, you may participate by calling the number that's on the screen right now for student registration. It's 2160029. Next, so the accolades for our One Webster Championship marching band keep rolling in. Last week, maybe you saw this, hopefully you did, but both New York State Senator Pam Helming and Representatives from Assembly Member Jen Lunsford's office visited Webster to proudly congratulate about 100 band members and their families during a ceremony at Webster Schrader High School. As you can see on the, from the pictures, there were smiles all around as Senator Helming presented each student with individual citations, and then Assembly Member Lunsford's office issued and delivered a state assembly proclamation about the band's recent large school-to-state championship title. Congratulations again to our student performers and the band's staff for their hard work this year, and also thank you for the band to participate, participating in our parade this past weekend. They actually were the caboose in the parade and brought up the, brought up the end, and they were fantastic, but it was great because they started, they were at the front. So everybody that went through the parade, all of the paradees, if you will, got to hear the band playing. So they were playing for all of them, and then they got to play for everybody else as well, which was really neat. And next up is our campus news, and I'm pleased to introduce two special guests tonight. Representing our elementary schools is Mr. Mark Schickdell, principal of DeWitt Road Elementary, and representing our secondary schools is Jackie Saunders, our interim principal at Spry Middle School. Thank you both for being here and showing, sharing your perspectives with us tonight. So I will turn it over to both Mark and Jackie, but Mark first.
Thank you, thank you. It's great, our reputation at DeWitt preceded us. This is, I mean, that was an awesome presentation from the WTA, and that was amazing, because they, they, I'm just gonna go deeper into what they talked about. We, I'm here to present for all seven elementary schools, and I probably just messed that up on you. Okay. Try it again. There we go. I'm here for all seven elementary schools, including our program, and I'm here presenting campus news for the elementaries. And one of the things that I wanna get through as we talk through is, we really focused on the collaboration within our buildings around kindness and that National Kindness Day, the World Kindness Day. We also will talk a little bit about our giving back when we talk about November and Thanksgiving. There was a lot of Thanksgiving going on in our buildings, and then finally, we had visitors. We had, the Board came to us, came to DeWitt, so that'll be some of the conversation we talk about. Starting it off, though, as you kinda got a little scoop on, World Kindness Day is a big deal at DeWitt. It's been, I'm gonna say it's World Kindness Month for us. We have a long history, we really have, we've dabbled, and now we've dug in deep around Kindness Day. In the past, you may have heard of, we had a drone flying over our school as we spelled out a positive message to others, and we rode our bikes to the Maplewood Nursing Home one year in the middle of a blizzard snowstorm. Yeah, that was crazy, but this year, we wanna top ourselves and do it, do it just one better, and one of the things we focused in on was actually a book, and it came from Colleen Hill, one of our teachers. It was about a snippet jar. Now, what it was, was we focused in for our school was, what are those random acts, those small pieces of kindness that we could really focus in on every day and give our kids an opportunity to fill? What we had was a snippet jar. So we, we read the book, The Snippet Jar, and we focused in on the little pieces of paper. Now, the pieces of paper, they earned their way into the snippet jar when you wrote something kind in regards to something you did for others. So our whole school participated, and we created our very own snippet jar, which you'll see on that page, and we, every student was able to add their random acts of kindness and drop that into the snippet jar, which was really neat. I gotta, I gotta give a lot of credit to Mrs. Pennington, our teacher, that snippet jar was in the room throughout the month. It's full, it was full, and we, daily, weekly, when we were on our morning announcements, we were able to read off some of those great things that our kids were doing. And then Ms. Rabinowitz, who decorated our front hallway and reminded our students, gave a visual reminder of the great things they can do for each other. So that was that small piece that we wanted to keep. We wanted to give kids the voice and be able to think about the daily interactions and what they could do for others, because couldn't we all have a little kindness right now? It's a great thing in our society, it was a great thing in our school, and it really ramped up our kids' interest in being kind to others and really cheering each other on. So that's one of those things we did in our school, and you'll see, we have a couple examples. I love these. I helped somebody up, I just love the, the small pieces, right? It's just that one moment. Or, Olivia helped me when my head was hurting, from Aubrey. Just, there's countless numbers of little random acts of kindness that our kids did, and they put those in that jar, and we got to read those throughout the month. As you think about World Kindness Month, one of the other things we wanted to focus on is, what are we gonna do within our grade levels and our classrooms? Giving our classrooms a voice as to what they could give back, what they could do for others, and some, some areas had consistent things they've done throughout the time. Example of that is, you'll see there, there's those hat and mitten drive. We do that every year at 4th grade. They decorate the hallways, and I know our Board of Education came in and walked through, and they saw that. We decorate the hallways with all these, we did, we did hats, we did mittens, and we also did socks, and we gave those back to the Hope House, so providing for others, and they're raising that, that awareness that others need those possessions and supporting them. So that, one of the examples in our front hallways, everybody had a piece of the puzzle, and they could add their own random act or act of kindness that they're gonna provide for others. And you shall see in this chart, we had a lot of things going on. We talked about, at UPK, they had a food drive. Kindergarten, they assisted a living center. First grade, a food drive, collecting canned foods, and they provided Thanksgiving baskets, they helped provide Thanksgiving baskets to feed a holiday meal. Second grade, they made and decorated inspirational bookmarks, which, by the way, you have at your place. We have some inspirational bookmarks that our kids provided, they not only provided it for there, but they also put these in the local library, like, be strong and be kind. So we're giving those away, and you have your own. So you can see, I love, there was one, the rock star, someone's gonna be a kindness rock star. You are kindness rock stars. So, in, in the words of our children, what they feel like would motivate you and root you on, so it's really a great opportunity for kids to really use their, send a message. Third grade, they made and decorated those bookmarks as well. They also provided books to the YWCA, and if you don't know much about that, that's an amazing organization downtown that are, they provided books, and they wrote in the covers of the books inspirational messages to children. So, when kids, when families are being brought into that YWCA, the children get provided a book, they'll get provided a book from Webster Kids that actually has a nice inspirational message to those children. It's nice. As I mentioned, the hat and mitten drive, and also that they made a connection at the fifth grade to the Jewish Home of Rochester. And there's some pictures of our YWCA where we made our visit, and those are our third grade teachers giving those books with the inspirational messages. Really nice offering. Great example of World Kindness Day at Plank North, Ms. Murkey's fifth grade class, they were discussing kindness and the growth mindset. We all want to focus in on how we can think, the sky is open and the endless opportunities our children have, and Ms. O'Hanlon's class connected with the fifth grade class, and they were actually discussing that. It's a great opportunity for them to talk, and really those collaborative conversations for our children. Plank, or I'm sorry, Clem North, excuse me, Clem North, 800 cans of food. If you don't know much about the Webster Hope House, it's an amazing organization right next to the Holy Trinity Church. It provides food, resources. It's two floors of clothing. If you haven't ever had a chance to go through there, they are an amazing contributor to the success of our community and our families around. So, they provided 800 cans of food that went directly to the Hope House. Making Spirits Brights is another organization, if you haven't heard about, is an amazing organization within our community. I know that DeWitt families rely on that, and as you can see, the Plank South organization provided not only nominal materials to that, but they also sponsor a family for Turkey Day. Making Spirits Bright is a adoptive family organization. We have roughly, I think, three or four families who will be adopted by Making Spirits Bright, and they'll provide them with materials for the holidays, and it's great. Plank South was providing materials back to that organization that's supporting so many others. Also, one other thing to mention, and I know Spry does this, and Plank North and Plank South, they support Schools 17, so that was one of their part of giving back to the community. At Schlegel Road, they had a literacy and human rights. This is part of the Esperanza Rising, it's a fifth grade, part of the fifth grade curriculum, and they were talking about human rights and author's notes. It was a great opportunity for them to perform a monologue. That's giving them their literacy, provides them practice and opportunities for fluency. And as you can see in our next slide, you guys were able to come over and see some of our fluency work at our school. So, we had a board visit our school, and Mrs. Gradador's class demonstrated fluency reads with Chicken Little. Chicken Little was actually a play. It was pretty funny. The, what was amazing about that play and the organization was the fluency, the affect, the great way and the tone that our children use within the play. That is a way for our fifth grade students to actually practice and work on fluency. Literacy has been a focus of our school and our professional development that we've been working on this summer, and that's one of the affects of that work is the organization that they're doing in the classroom. So, really awesome, and thank you for coming and visiting and seeing that. The kids loved it. They were very excited. I got to visit that class after you guys, after they presented to you, and they were just so overjoyed they had an opportunity to show off their talents. Finally, this also came up today, which is awesome, and that was our Geotech team. Woo-hoo, Geotech. They are amazing. They're an amazing organization, and they came over, and you can see a picture there. That's the Geotech team, and this is three years in the making. This lived through a pandemic. All the materials made it through the pandemic, which is amazing, but the Geotech team created an outdoor classroom. You can see there, it is spectacular, and they did an amazing job over the course of the last three years. It kind of went to rest for a year, and we had to get through it, but they came back this year. They added, we have an aluminum roof on it, and they put in the decking around there and the benches, so it's an amazing project, and we are so appreciative of that. Thank goodness they were able to finish that up because Mr. Tuttarello, that whole organization, they did an amazing job on our work, so thank you to them. And thank you to Mr. Freeman, because Mr. Freeman was one of the first people to give me that idea, inspired by that. And I also want to thank Deborah Reed, who was a prior principal before me, who, this was her project from the beginning. She really wanted that outdoor classroom. Scientists through and through, she was really, she started this organization and built it. So, it's awesome.
All right.
And I'm going to pass it along to my esteemed colleague.
All right. Great. Thank you, Mark. That was awesome, hearing all about the elementary. I love hearing about all the elementary, and we definitely see that kindness as it comes to the middle school, and we're going to jump off on that and talk about it, the middle school. But first, I want to thank the board for coming to Spry and seeing, walking through and administrators, seeing our teachers doing what they do best, teaching our kids and supporting our staff, supporting students, and our students doing what they do best, collaborating, working, designing, developing our tech, our science. It was just, it was great to really be able to showcase that to you, so thank you for coming over. The teachers and staff loved to see you, and the students were engaged and wanted to share with you all that they were doing, so that was wonderful, so thank you for that. I'm here on behalf of the secondary schools, and we're going to start off by talking about some kindness that we did at Spry, and definitely, we did quite a few different things. Spry Middle School has been supporting our veterans and active-duty members for years, probably 20 years or so, and it's, we just had to think outside the box this year. And we provided to our veterans and active-duty family members, 90 of them, we were able to do a pickup, delivery service from Spry this year. We're not Applebee's, but we're Spry Middle School, and we can, we have it available.
It's better. It's better.
It is. It definitely was better. So, as you can see, we had 35 students from our Builders Club and for our Student Council designed rocks that were red, white, and blue, and thank you, and we made paper placemats, because we've always done that when they've come in, so they got to take home the placemats for their dinner, and made thank you notes and goodie bags, and just put a whole bunch together to deliver to the students. And we'll show some more pictures of them doing that. There it comes. So, that's our delivery service. So, they got takeout containers and ran right up to the cars, and we got to hear a little bit of the stories, because usually we sit down with the families and we get to know more about the individual veterans and their stories, and that was kind of missed this year, but it was a perfect night. If you can see the sky, we had some red, white, and blue in the sky. It was a beautiful night. So, we got to talk to the veterans and their families when they came up to the car, so we did get that interaction piece, which was awesome. And we had our Elks Club, who have helped us for years, come over and help do it, and we had our Kitchen Help. They made the spaghetti and some of the desserts, and we got a lot of help and support that way. So, a lot of, one person in the kitchen, her brother is a veteran, so she wanted to, first one to offer to help out, volunteer. And there are all the happy faces of our students knowing what they did to help support our veterans and their families. They were definitely eager and signed up for next year already. And we had a lot of sponsors. As we all know, our Webster community is awesome, and we had our Student Council, our Builders Club, the Webster Fairport Elks, but we had Webster Community Chest, Wegmans, Hegadorns, and Walmart all helped sponsor that. And we had our sixth-grade Web Night come in, and we had 106 sixth graders come in, and we had 80 of our Web Leaders leading those activities. They had activities in the gyms, they played basketball, played games, they did crafts, we did bingo, a whole bunch of different activities, coloring nails, different things that they did. And we want to, big, talk about kindness. Our Spry PTSA, if you see those pictures, that is the kindness breakfast they gave to our staff. It was, and again, the community helped donate that, and the staff were just elated on how much, how thankful our PTSA was and gave that to the Spry staff, so big shout-out to our PTSA for that. And to present about some, Willock, from Willock is our Bobona Child Advocacy Center, came and gave a presentation to both our middle schools to talk about student safety, and our health classes are all teaching about student safety. So, it was great to actually come in and get some expertise in our community to come in and teach the staff, and then our mental health providers had another hour with them to learn more techniques and to learn some more safety tips. And then a big shout-out to Mr. Robinowitz for the Golden Apple Award at Willock. And then I'll talk about Goal next. Our Goal had their annual Goals Giving. That's a good. Feast and Games, all the students shared something they were thankful for, and highlights can be seen on our Goal Twitter page. Check it out. And some statistics from Goal are 24 out of 35 of the Goal students are passing all of their classes and learning recoveries in process for those who need it, and their Goal attendance for the first quarter was at least 90% for all of the grade levels, so some celebration there for Goal. And we had some, the liaison, student liaisons took my highlights for the Schrader and for Thomas, and they did a fantastic job of showcasing and sharing that. That is at Spry with all the students coming over for sources of strength. Several clubs were decorating the school windows and getting in the winter theme at Schrader, and Warrior Day and Warrior Night will be coming up soon after the holidays in January, so you'll look forward to seeing some of that information coming out from Mr. Benz pretty soon. And for Thomas, we already heard about that wonderful choir activity that was spectacular and showcased for Mrs. Nitch, and the Titans Rock to Change in the Dream Club at Thomas. Doing some wonderful things, the students did a great job of presenting that information as well. And again, thank you, Board and District Administration. It's always great to have all the support at our secondaries, and it was great to see you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, Jackie, both, very much.
Very much appreciate your time to be with us tonight, share all this.
Yeah, that's great.
I just want to thank you for doing such a great job on your tours and for welcoming us in and being so patient as we walked around, and if we wanted to pop in somewhere and take a look at something. It was so easy, and it was so informative, and my face hurt from smiling afterward, so I just wanted to say thank you so much for giving us that opportunity and also seeing how the capital improvement projects have had such an impact on our students, and it was really great to see, so thank you.
Yeah, we got to get in and see, part of that tour, we really wanted to show off the really great things that our district has done to make DeWitt better physically. So, we had that new ceilings, we talked about the new lights, we got to see the library, that's where we did the presentation, and all the wonderful things they did around safety and improvements in each of our rooms and in our hallways. So, it was, it was great, and we appreciate the time. It was exciting, honestly. It was really exciting to have you guys there. You guys are welcome anytime.
Awesome. Thank you.
Great, and I know that things are going on construction-wise over at Spry as well. Let me just finish, and I'll just finish my report, and just again, another quick shout-out for everyone that participated in the Webster Parade of Lights this past Saturday. It was our first opportunity to collaborate with PTSA. We had a float this year with, in collaboration with PTSA. It was a One Webster float. It was fantastic. We had about 40 people that were able to walk with us, and a lot of fun, and it was a great event. And finally, a brief schedule reminder. Each year, all of our 11 buildings practice an early-release emergency drill. This year, it will be on Thursday, December 23rd, and there will be more information and details on our website in the very, very near future, but again, I just wanted to put the date on everyone's radar that we're going to practice that early-release drill on Thursday, December 23rd, the day before our holiday break. And that ends my edition, or that ends our edition of this campus news for the evening. Thank you both very much for your help.
Thank you again. And next, for the instructional report, we have UPK, Heather Balsamo, Ms. Zero.
Joanna Zero, yep.
Joanna Zero. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Good evening to the Board and to our District Administration. We are absolutely thrilled to be here. This has been a dream of ours, and we know that many of you have been visiting recently, as we heard previously, and some of you even have grandchildren who have been in our program, so super excited. Thanks to each one of our Board members for your time and volunteering for our children. Appreciate it. So, our dream, I am Heather Balsamo. Joanna Zero is our lead teacher for pre-K, and Nicole Quarterman is a speech-language pathologist that's servicing our students this year. Behind us is a talented, dedicated, loving crew, or streaming online, many of them are joining us, of teachers and staff and administrators that have worked diligently to give their all to building this program in a rather quick turnaround. So, we are so grateful for everyone's love and commitment each day for our children. So, as you've traveled, many of you have had interactions firsthand, some laughter, some joy that hopefully you're finding when you do visit. But as you see in this picture, one of the most important pieces is that we have a UPK and we have a fourth grader, so that family is able to share and send their children to one school building, and so that's been a wonderful piece added this year. So, where did we start? Where did we begin? Winning the competitive grant in 2008 added 127 half-day students in pre-K and gave us the much-needed funding to start our program. Initially, we started in childcare centers and daycares for all students, for 127 of them, due to the space and the timing constraints of the grant funding and starting that first year. So, gradually, beginning with Joanna as a half-day K and a half-day UPK teacher at DeWitt, we were able to locate space and continue to look for opportunities to bring our students into our elementary schools. So, Plank North, then Clem North, and then Schlegel, growing our numbers to 160 in 2016 and '17. Much more cost-effective plan and able to add more students while continuing to partner with daycare agencies and to continue to benefit our community. Thanks to Where Are We Now? We are with Brian Freeman, quickly uncovering the additional funding for full-day-only that was available, and some quick thinking by Brian Neenan and Erin Land to expedite the process of saying, "Let's go. We need to get this, and we need to bring this into our district." So, just over a million dollars in March, we were able to get to work collaborating with building administration and locating space in each building, including our secondary schools. Having at least one full-day class in each elementary school was critical to be able to provide opportunities for children to be in their home catchment school. With securing two additional Schrader High School classrooms, we are able to serve more children and get us closer to our full capacity of the grant and the new money. And as I'm sure you've heard, the win for our big kids and the win for our little kids is just amazing. Feel that light and that love kind of transforming through the building, so that's been wonderful. It's one of my favorite places to be. So, this brought us to 13 full-day classes, one each in Kids First and Doodle Bugs, and four half-day classes. Families were able to select a full or a half-day, and we were able to use our lottery process to place as many students as possible in their home school. The staffing and hiring process took July and August, and our furniture happily surprised us in mid-August in almost all of the 10 new locations that we were adding. We still have some items that arrive weekly that were back-ordered, but they are mostly dramatic play and simple little items that certainly did not impact our opening. Honestly, thanks to our very local rep who lives in Webster, Matt LaRaca, he was able to work tirelessly with me and putting together supplies and furniture to take that load off our custodial staff, who were involved in so many construction projects, so that was important to us as well. So, the most important piece to us was that children and families were able to see an amazing play-based learning space that was off our custodial staff who were involved in so many construction projects. So that was important to us as well. So the most important piece to us was that children and families were able to see an amazing play-based learning space that was welcome for them, welcoming to them when they walked in the door in August for an orientation. Okay? So we're going to hear just a little snippet from our students about what they enjoy. And then Joanna is going to talk about how we play each day.
My favorite part of school is when we get to play. We have fun on the playground.
Play a lot.
Making art projects.
To play with my friends.
And play babies.
And draw pictures.
We like playing with the school teacher stuff.
Playing at centers.
I like to play in the kitchen.
I like a bunch of people playing with me.
I'm playing with my friends. And I like playing. And playing at the hospital for dogs and pets.
My favorite thing in my whole life is to be the customer and the baker.
My favorite part of pre-K is playing with this dog.
Out of the mouse and baby, right?
Well, social and emotional development and, as you saw, learning through play are and always have been at the heart of our program. We seek to provide joyful, active learning environments with caring educators who are responsive to children's strengths, interests, areas of need, and their approaches to learning. We strive to establish classroom communities where children feel safe, have a sense of connection, know that they are loved and valued, and view learning as both fun and purposeful. Our pre-K team, many of whom are in the audience here, which shows their dedication, understands learning as a lifelong process of discovery and joy and views our learners as curious, competent, and full of wonder. We know that children learn best through firsthand experiences. Play motivates, stimulates, and supports children in their development of all skills. Children also bring their own language, customs, and culture into play, and they learn about that of their peers in the process. It is in play that many foundational social skills, like sharing, taking turns, and compromising, are learned and practiced. Children learn how to communicate their ideas, how to negotiate with their peers, how to problem-solve, improvise. Guided play also fosters positive approaches to learning, including creativity, curiosity, We'll see some pictures here of some of our learning spaces. And as you saw during your visits and as you can imagine through these pictures, our days together in pre-K are filled with playful learning experiences. Stories and songs, movement and mindfulness activities, building, creating, and pretending. Each day, children have opportunities for gross motor play, both indoors and outdoors. We incorporate music throughout our day. The classroom environment is thoughtfully and purposefully designed to provide spaces for whole-class meetings, small group instruction, and just cozy, calm places for alone time if a child chooses. The planful room arrangement along with carefully selected materials is key to our play-based approach, which involves both child-initiated and teacher-supported learning. The learning centers that you see within our classrooms provide areas where students can explore specific subjects by playing and engaging in self-directed but thoughtfully-designed activities. Teachers encourage children's learning and inquiry through interactions that aim to stretch their thinking to higher levels. So each day in our classrooms, you could see learning center choice time activities, including dramatic play, sensory table, art, science, or discovery center, find motor activities, block building, listening center, and more. This guided play allows children to explore and manipulate materials and ideas while they interact with peers and supportive adults. Their social, language, motor, and cognitive development are achieved through this child-initiated exploration and discovery. As they interact with their environment, children gather information about the world through their senses and connect what they already know with new knowledge, skills, and We respect each child's individual rate and style of learning and continually celebrate each child's growth and progress. The play continuum that you can see in this slide helps us determine our next steps to guide students along in their learning. We set up various learning opportunities based on their needs, our interactions while they play, and the open-ended questions that we ask while they are sharing materials to encourage and increase student-to-student interactions, the use of their imaginations, innovation, and creativity. And by incorporating this play continuum into our progress reporting tool, it's actually the first thing that parents see at the top of our progress report, we reinforce in our communication with families that our commitment is to developmentally-appropriate, child-centered, play-based learning. And now Heather is going to talk a little bit more about our partnerships with our local childcare centers.
Yes. So both the half-day grant and our new full-day grant, or grant, full-day money, have expectations that we use a portion of the money to partner with daycares if available, according to what our expectations are in a rubric that we designed together. So our goal is to benefit our larger community by building the partnership that's beneficial for all, but especially for each of our Webster families. So we work collaboratively to address the needs of our students, the site, and the staffing. We share continual professional learning, monthly during our curriculum meetings and faculty meetings they're part of, but also additional age-appropriate child development, social, emotional pieces that were really hitting home this year. They are able to, we're able to help build their library collections. We're able to help build their curriculum and resources so that they align and they bridge the gap to kindergarten and through third grade. Through our site visits and many of our visitations in the daycares, we can kind of walk in and notice if there's certain pieces that need to be added to a learning space, such as a carpet. So there's a few carpets that we purchased for a couple of the locations just to help it be softer and more warm and inviting for children at certain areas. Okay? We have a little video clip here of Diana Singer, who is the owner of Kids First, to share her perspective, followed by Meg Scott, who is an occupational therapist and services and supports many of our pre-K rooms and around our district.
I feel that we are both excited as two different teams. We're very excited about what we can accomplish for our four-year-olds, what, how the UPK program has expanded, and we've got the resources that we're able to combine is just tremendous. The fact that we've been able to bring the therapists that we need here and get the support for, with professional education, your invitations to our teachers to co-mingle with the other UPK teachers. It's a great opportunity, the new programs that have been introduced this year, and also the visits from your speech-pathologist resources, people coming in several times a month has been wonderful.
The value that pre-K has brought to the community is huge. It's amazing. It's giving our littlest people who are at the prime of, you know, their development right now, it's giving them an opportunity to step into the classroom in a school environment, be with other peers their age, you know, be with phenomenal teachers that are tapping into their development and providing these kiddos with experiences that they wouldn't necessarily have if they were home, you know, with mom and dad and grandma and grandpa. Well, that is awesome for these kiddos. Being with peers, developing those social skills right now is crucial. And especially now, you know, with everything that these kiddos have been through the past year, a lot of kiddos, this is their first experience being with kids their own age. So there's a lot of, a lot of tricky components that we're navigating around, and it's awesome to have the professionals working with them, you know, helping them meet their needs in a loving, caring environment. It's just, it's, it's been an amazing asset to the Webster community, something much needed and much appreciated by myself and all other providers that are, that are working within the community right now.
So as Meg so eloquently said there too, you know, many times we're asked, why UPK and why now? And our response is really, we need it. This is the time. Being in the middle of a pandemic, children have not been in structured settings, have not, we've had lots of daycares close, and so this is the time for us to embrace this and work hard and make sure that it's successful in the most loving location that a child can be in. So Nicole is one of our speech-language pathologists.
Hi, everybody.
Is going to talk to us, sorry, is going to talk to us about some of the ways that we support our students.
So this is my 21st year in Webster here, and it's my 26th year practicing in speech and language. And throughout my career, I've worked with almost every age level and nearly every aspect in the field of speech-language pathology. I bring this up because I chose this grade level. I chose to come back here. I even had to interview to get this position. And I did this because I feel so strongly about early intervention and that this is an area where we can really make our greatest impact with our youngest language learners. Because we know that preschool children are all developing social interactions and expressing their thoughts, feelings, wants, and needs, we decided that our UPK program should and would have access to universal speech and language support and explicit instruction for all children. I'm lucky enough to work with Wendy Rogers, who is sitting behind me right now, who also has years of experience in early intervention and is also a speech-language pathologist. Together, we are able to spend half a day in each UPK classroom, including our daycare Our goal is to facilitate language skills that we know, based on research and experience, that are most needed for our kids to be successful today, later on in their school experience, and into adulthood. We provide whole-group and small-group lessons with the focus on improving social and emotional communication skills, listening skills, including whole-body listening, following verbal directions, and understanding basic concepts, as well as the ability to express ideas effectively. We also target phonemic awareness skills, which is the building block in the science of learning, of the science of reading, to provide a continuum and bridge to new learning in kindergarten. We spend a ton of time working on these skills through play. Actually, they think they're playing, we know we're working. I'm often in bed by 7:00 PM these nights. In addition, we are able to support teachers in providing a language-enriched environment for all our students. We work collaboratively to aid in determining normal versus delayed speech, and we also work with our outside service providers to help meet the needs of all of our students. We engage in and promote professional learning during our monthly curriculum meetings and our daily planning sessions. For example, we have provided strategies and resources like visual cue cards with pictures and visual schedules to all our teams to help our second language learners find success in our classrooms. It really has been a truly rewarding experience for me so far. I know that many of you have come into our classrooms and see us, have seen us in action and really hoping to see you come out again and see us. I think Brian's going to talk now about our finances.
Oh, yeah. So it's, a lot's happened in the last seven months with UPK. So before Heather gets into where the program is heading, I thought it was important to just kind of review the funding because some things changed over the summer. You know, we were super excited back in April when they released that we were getting, you know, 1.4 million dollars for the program. And it, you know, every year by June 30th, we submit the grant, so that's what we did. Heather and I collaborate, submit the paperwork. But in July, they made us redo it all. And I just wanted to point that out for everybody's information. They made us re-submit, I mean, in New York State's infinite wisdom, why do it once when you could do it twice? Submit a New York State application for the original funding that we've always had, and then another one for the extra allocation, which is what they're calling federal government grants. I'm just pointing this out because it just seemed odd all districts had to do this. And I don't think as we go through the budget process, there's going to be a nice, easy, oh, yeah, there's our 1.4 million dollars that you could benchmark for planning for next year. I think things are going to get washed, and it might look like when the governor's report comes out that we're still only getting 342,000, and then there's this funding stream over to the right. So I just, as part of this presentation, wanted to make everybody aware of that kind of nuance chain that happened over the summer. You know, as the second-paid pessimist in the district behind our Director of Safety and Security, I don't like when the state tinkers with stuff like this. It doesn't give me that good, easy feeling. But I also think it's going to be hard, once they gave the money, to districts to pull it away. So I think there's going to be some further conversations as we go through the budget process on the impact of UPK. I just wanted to give us a little heads up on that as part of this. And back to the happy stuff, Heather.
I was going to say, seriously? We don't want to go after that, Brian. We were, we were going back and forth about even including that. For just that reason. We have been given, I mean, Brian and I have been on several webinars and live meetings with Jason Breslin, who is our New York State leader, and we are hearing that things are going to start to change, but we're not sure when, so.
Yes. All right. So where are we heading? Let's get to the dreaming again. So where are we heading? We're continuing to build our capacity of our collective staff. As you heard, we were doing some pretty crazy hours in hiring and staffing over the summer, and so we look forward to any opportunity that we can be together. And so we try to build that in. We are doing some online learning together where we meet for a half an hour after we watch an online social-emotional, age-appropriate, developmentally-appropriate, social-emotional learning. And then we'll meet together for a half an hour with a national consultant to be able to help us process that. Things like vestibular input for children, which again are, okay, what kind of obstacle courses can we build into our school day so that children are being regulated and getting what they need from our, from our time together? And that is just count one way. There's so many ways that we need to be able to do that. So the learning takes, needs to continue to take place. High school volunteers. We have a handful of high schoolers beginning their volunteering tomorrow, and so excited, many are so excited to be able to give back to their elementary school that they attended. And so great big thanks to Transportation, who has been working together with me to make these bus trips midday work so that our kids can visit and be part of a UPK day. Some have already begun. For example, here's a snippet from Bridgette McNamara, who is actually here with us tonight as well, with her mother, who is a UPK teacher. She is a senior at Schrader, and we wanted to just share a snippet of what it has meant for her.
I'm kind of like a classroom assistant, and I spend, I come in in the morning a little bit and my free blocks with the kids. And I get to like play with them and help them like learn and grow, and I get to do so much with them. It's so exciting. I really do love it. I think we're teaching them how to work together and how to adapt to new situations because, you know, a lot of them, not only is being like in a high school a really different situation, some of them have never been able to like really communicate with kids their age. So we're teaching them, you know, adapting and patience is a big thing at their age and kindness, definitely too. And for, as what they're teaching me, they're teaching me a lot, more than I thought I was going to learn. But they're teaching, like me, the biggest thing I think is how to communicate without words because that's like such a big thing at their age, you know? Some, one girl in the class doesn't speak English, some of them, you know, are very shy and they don't want to talk, but they form these great friendships over not even talking, and it's so incredible. And I've learned how to, you know, tell them how to do the right thing with, you know, not even words. And that's helped me like outside the classroom, too.
Thanks, Bridgette. Thank you every day, Bridgette. Mrs. Zero would say a great big thank you there. So as you could tell a little bit in that video, we do have, we have made, had to make lots of modifications at the high school. You saw the lockers that our kids are using and again, the custodial staff who, not just the custodial staff at Schrader, but Schrader, but our district wide B&amp;G, Mr. Cunningham, jumping in to be able to lower all of those shelving units for us, making sure the hooks are ready for us. So when there are three of us here, it really truly is a representation of our entire district just embracing this at each building, at each level, and across the district. Where else are we going? We've met with MCC, and we've been approved to have a dual enrollment child and development course in September for both Thomas and Schrader, juniors and seniors, which includes pre-K time in the classroom. So we're actually going a little bit above and beyond what MCC expects. We do plan to have that class go for a full year and not just one semester so that they can build those strong relationships and rapport with our kids. We're building relationships within our school buildings, the getting used to systems, buddy classes, having older children come in and show leadership opportunities. We've begun a request for proposals for any childcare centers who would like to partner with us next year in UPK. So Brian and I actually have a meeting, a community meeting on Monday morning for anyone who would like to express interest and come and get some questions and, questions answered from us. We are looking to streamline, continuing to streamline our registration process for our families so that when they are registering from UPK to K, that that is not redundant, which is really exciting, I think, for many people in our district, and for our building base secretarial staff too. We will be opening our 22-23 lottery mid-February, which is the exact same timeline that we have used for the last 10 years. And who knows what we will be dreaming of next. So after tonight, this will give us a little bit more opportunity to move on to some more dreams. If I can do this right. It starts every time, Paul, sorry. There it goes. So our most important role collectively is to love, to support, and provide playful learning experiences for each and every child where they are developmentally, to make sure that their families know that they are loved, to see a picture of their child each day or a few times a week now. When we start, it's almost every day, a few times a day, making sure they know what they're playing with, who they're playing with, and that their teacher knows them very well. Our goals are to develop their love of learning, to advocate for their needs and wants, and help them to learn to communicate their emotions, to problem solve and create. Again, lifelong skills. And so in closing, let's hear from our precious tiny humans.
It feels like I have a lot of friends.
We play together and do lots of things together, like doing the nighttime game, that's where we sleep, and running around together and getting all the frost off the playground so everybody won't sweat.
They work and they care me.
I like brushing my teeth.
I brush my teeth at home.
Playing with the toys.
And I like to go outside.
And I love going courtyard and play. And I love fixing anything. And I love helping the teacher and making some pictures for her. And that's all.
One million thanks to Paul Conley with his magic, because it did take Krista and Paul and I quite some time to get those videos with masks on and indoors. So we thank Paul for his magic with all of that. So again, we just want to thank you for your time and dedication to our most important vessels, our children. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Can we also have everyone who is part of the program and is spending the evening with us tonight? Can you all please stand so we can recognize you as well? Thank you for being here. Can we go around the table and take comments or questions?
I loved visiting the preschool. I loved seeing the modifications you made at the high school level, in the bathrooms, that the kids could have access to things. I loved, they definitely are learning in each of their learning centers. You're incorporating some type of skill into their play. They don't even know it. I wish that all, like all learning was like that because then, you know, kids would continue to love to learn. So I love how you put that together, and I loved seeing that. So it was great seeing such little kids and such big kids in one building. You've made places for play so that they could still feel like it was a preschool. Kids are getting dropped off at school, they're starting to get that experience. And, and what's, and this is such a difficult time with masks, and you're making it work, and you're working with all those little ones to help show your emotion. You could see it in them even with their masks on, that they were playing and they were seeing you and they were smiling. And they were so open with us, like they loved, they were very open to playing. Like you can play with me anyplace in here. And there were, the rooms had different types of play too, which I loved that too.
Actually, I have a daughter who just went from UPK into kindergarten. And it was wonderful to have that transition between, so she was going right into where she already knew. So she had to change school buildings, but I love the fact they're really trying to streamline it so that families can stay in their, their catchment schools. I have a three-year-old who's at, actually at Doodle Bugs, and I was thrilled. We actually chose that location because the pre-K was already there. So we really do appreciate that consistency in services and support, the reflection of the district curriculum in, in the daycare setting. So that's, as a parent, I can trust that my kid will be ready for kindergarten once the transition takes place. Question for you, Brian. Has the state talked at all about providing extra funding for, for transportation for kids who need it to UPK programs? Because I know a couple of districts are concerned about getting kids to where they need to be if it becomes more of a universal thing.
I know it's out there, but nothing definitive right now if there's going to be legislation passed for it.
Okay. I was just curious, because that would be one, one way to make sure, to ensure equity would be to provide transportation to those who need it. So.
Brian, do you want to share? One of our challenges with that is that children, when they come into pre-K, can be three, as you know, right? So the hard part with that is they all have to be buckled into a car seat, not a five-point harness. And so that was the challenge for us as well. So we've started like field trips for Schrader kids, Schrader UPKs to go to playgrounds. And we waited until December 1st or until all of our kids were four before we could do that because of that.
That's good to know. I don't think a lot of people realize. I personally didn't know that that was a limitation. Okay, that's good to know.
And Officer Hurley's ready to buckle, but they have to be, they have to be in a car seat.
Right, okay.
Have you ever ridden on a bus next to, next to a three-year-old in one of those seats? You would feel they're much safer buckled in a seatbelt than they are in that seat, but legally, they have to be in those. So it's, that's kind of, that's a concern.
Okay, that makes sense.
It's a huge impediment to do it, transporting on a large scale.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you so much for the report. I think for me, the piece that strikes me so much is the interaction between our youngest learners and our oldest learners, and the impact that it's having on both of them. I can tell you personally, my son has been in there reading at Schrader, and I never thought my son was a very sensitive, kind, caring person until the day, sorry, until he came home and told me how much that meant to, that day was so impactful to him that he shared it with us and it stayed with him. So whatever you're doing, keep doing, because it's making a difference in my own home.
I, I will just tell you, I mean, I have a middle schooler and a high schooler myself, and mental health is a huge piece of my life. And challenges around that are a huge part of our life, and COVID has not been kind in that way. And I think that what I've noticed the most, being at Schrader, is that our kids are good for high school students' mental health. They're not only good for high school students' mental health, they're good for high school staff mental health. And I'm not saying that lightly. They, there's, there's something so joyful about just these little humans running around and, in their presence with these adults who are only used to seeing, you know, big, tall kids that are sometimes bigger than they are. We have so many adopted sort of grandmas, grandpas, aunts, uncles, the, the security staff there love our kids, the cafeteria staff, they're coming in and, you know, volunteering to be guest readers. And, I mean, so not only the people who are sort of supposed to kind of be part of what we're doing, but all these other people. And we have teachers begging to, you know, bring their kids in to just be, can we just spend 10 minutes in here? Because their kids will work harder for them and be more focused and be more motivated because they know that at the end of class, they get to come in and, you know, read a book to a four-year-old. I mean, it means a lot. And, you know, we, we sort of knew that it would be great, but we really didn't know how great it could be. And I mean, I remember way back when I was at DeWitt, and it became full day K, and they said, you know, we don't have space for pre-K in our elementary buildings anymore. And that was so heartbreaking. And I said at the time, can we find space at a middle school or a high school? And, and that was a long, long time ago. And it, so it took a long time coming like around to this idea again. And thankfully, the Heather and, and the administration and everybody was able to make this happen because I think that the timing of this is really important and really special. And I think that, that it's really impacting a lot of kids' lives. And I think you're going to see some high school students who maybe didn't really know what direction they were, were wanting to go in, kind of finding some direction in some way, wanting to work with kids because of it. So anyway, that's, so I'm glad that your son came in, and I hope he comes back and reads again, because yeah, it's been pretty special. And I'm even seeing a lot of kids that I taught in pre-K and kindergarten at the high school now who are coming in. And it's pretty special to have them, you know, come full circle that way.
We're also seeing that in the elementary placements too, where the fourth grade or the fifth grades are reading with the UPK. And I'm seeing the same things with the, the kids just loving, loving to be in there, and it's really helping them emotionally.
I would just add, I was so impressed, beyond everything that's been shared already, with the environments that you created in such a short span of time, given all that we know about the supply chain issues. All these small spaces are so well crafted to do exactly what they're designed to do. And, and that's thanks to all of you.
A little sweat equity.
Sweat equity, hey.
Sweat equity this summer.
Absolutely, recognize that.
Very impressive.
I will give a little kudos to Clum North, because I know my sister-in-law has said that my niece is doing so well this year, and it's really going to prepare her for kindergarten next year. So I can't say enough, because when I get those texts from my sister-in-law, it's like, oh, that's, it's just nice to hear. So definitely kudos to Clum North if anyone's here.
They're both here.
Oh, yay!
I would just like to personally commend you, thank you, applaud you for what you've do, you've done with UPK. You sowed the seeds, you've helped them flourish, and you're nourishing the souls of so many. I, my granddaughter is a graduate of the UPK program, my grandson is in it right now. And if you are doing for the entire student body that you have as what you've done for those two, then you're doing amazing things. It's just an amazing program, and thank you.
So Heather, Joanna, and Nicole, thank you for all you're doing. These kids aren't just emotional health for our high school kids, they're emotional health for the board as we walked around, for sure. The smiles, right? So I have one, I do have a question. We've been doing this now for, I think, about five years since 2016 or so. Have we looked?
2008.
2008, so 12 years, 13 years. Have we looked to see if the students who have been enrolled in UPK have actually performed better through their career socially, emotionally, and academically? And I'm guessing the answer is yes. So why, and you're looking forward, haven't you asked Brian for another $2 million to expand it to everybody?
I think you just did, Mike. Thank you very much. And nationally, you can see any of those, the research that goes on nationally. So I think that's one of the key components is just, again, how we ended, the problem solving, the social emotional, the confidence, the ability to know yourself and what you need starts at a young age. And if you're able to identify that, whether it be that I need to go out for a run, you think about yourself as an adult, I need to go out for a run, I need to have a few minutes of quiet solace. What do I need to help myself feel regulated and ready for my day, or in a moment, in a quick 10-minute span? Those are pieces that we all need to be able to recognize in ourselves, and those are the skills that you see long-term from our UPK children as they go through school. You start to see some of the leadership that comes out in them. So it's not the academics that we're, we're really going after the ABCs, the one, two, threes. That is not our program. Our program is, it will happen, but our program is really just knowing yourself so well and being able to communicate.
Well, and having taught kindergarten for many years in this district and other places, I can tell you that any kindergarten teacher would say, if, if a child can come to them ready to listen to a story, ready to share with friends, being able to express their emotions and, and regulate their, their emotions. I mean, all of the academic learning is easy to teach when a child is ready to learn. It's those pieces that, the social and emotional development pieces that are so important. And I would say that our pre-K program is not just in, an investment in those children for that, but we are building such a strong relationship, and the beginning of a relationship with the families, that is going to continue for 13 more years beyond our foundation that we're laying. And I think that the trust and rapport that we build with families in pre-K and the, the sort of additional information parents get about, you know, their child as a learner and, and what, how much the teachers love them and care about them, that, that really sticks with them. And that's something that, you know, when you start school in kindergarten and beyond, you may not feel as much of. I mean, it's starting school in your own district in pre-K and having that continuity, just, that's a huge investment of, of relationship building for families, I think, that is, is really important and meaningful.
I think so too.
So we've heard such an amazing celebration. I could echo everything that's been said tonight. I also want, it's recognition of the hard work that you guys have definitely put in, and, and a dream. Heather, this has been a dream, I know, of yours and Joanna's and Nicole and team for a long time now, and watching it come to fruition has been just such a joy. And I think that's been a key word tonight, is those little guys actually teach us and make sure that we remember that this is about joy. And so the last thing I would say is something that I know I've said several times, and I will continue to say it. This program is a game changer for our district. And I really want you to know how much we appreciate the efforts that you guys are putting in to our youngest learners. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Brian would have more of that number, but I think, Brian, do you know that off the top of your head, Monroe County School District, of how much, you know, funding-wise and how many students we have compared to some of the other districts? Off the top. Or Heather? I know Heather's right there too. I know we, there are districts that aren't utilizing their full funding this year. They did not jump out of the gate like we did, and have kind of taken a year to plan for it. I, so. Heather's not going that. Yeah, we're a little bit ahead on, on that man. I think we did get, if I go back, check my records, when I compared, either the first or second most allocation in, in the county. I think only Greece. Yeah, Heather just said we got the most. Yeah. Our Rochester City has a very unique UPK setup, so I'd take them out of the conversation. I think it was Greece then us with the largest allocation.
And can we have a motion, please, to accept the presentation, the instructional report on UPK? Maria, second by Jen, all in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Now moving on to new business, budget kickoff presentation.
Sure. So I've just put together a few slides for everybody to kind of give you an update on early budgeting and what, and what's going on. So just going to go through some state updates that are something to watch for. We're going into a contested governorship along with all other legislative. along with all other legislative offices coming up next November. That always adds a little spice, as I say, to the budget process because we never know what New York State's going to do in a, in an election year. A lot of promises already kind of flying out the door. So that, that changes our budget process. And then state education department always throws a few things at us such as new attendance data collection, like school lunch. Are we going to continue to see a free school lunch program moving forward? And just last year with the, you know, over the summer getting hit with the transportation aid take back. So is there anything new to look out for that's going to impact this budget cycle? So it's tough to make predictions, especially about the future. One of my favorite Yankees, Yogi Berra, like to throw this quote out there, just to kind of say, we'll, you know, it's going to be interesting. But one thing to look out for, never really paid attention. Every November, there's an initial update based on all the attendance data, all the financial data that we've submitted in the fall. November, state aid releases all this information. We've always ignored these, these updates. Why is that? Because foundation aid was frozen and then phased in through the governor's proposals, you know, which really made that January governor's proposal the first real update on what's coming out of the state. Now, based on last year, there is a defined pathway as part of the current law for funding foundation aid. That's changed. So we actually paid a little bit of attention last month when those came out. So how reliable is this information? Well, you might have seen Governor Hockel settled the lawsuit settlement for the nicer New York State education commitment. The courts agreed. So I think it's a strong enough commitment to the funding is going to happen. And what I'm going to show you what our projection is, could tweak a little bit based on some updated numbers. But what are we expecting based on what was released in November? A $4.8 million foundation aid increase. Now, where is this coming from? So our full phase in, full foundation aid based on all of our factors, all of our enrollment, all the economic indicators that go into the nine-page formula is saying we should get $41.4 million, 41.5 rounded up. That should be our full phase in. Right now, currently for 2122, we're at 31.8. And if you remember, it's a three-year phase in. This is year one. So we got two years. So we figure we're about $10 million apart. About $5 million over the next two years makes rough, makes sense. So this increase over 2122 is projected to be a 15.1% increase in foundation aid. So I'm sharing that with you. Things to look forward to as part of the budget process. Are we going to get close to that? Is it going to come to fruition? Some other early budget factors we're looking at, ERS came out with their contribution and that's going down to 11.6. So that, we should see some savings on that budget line, the employees' retirement system. Some of that savings will be taken by increase in the hourly wages, but that's a significant drop in the district contributions to ERS. TRS relatively flat right now. We have a projected, their final rates come out in February, 9.8% this year. They're projected between 10, 10 and a half. Slight increase. Why? With the stock market being as, you know, rate of return being as well, what's happening? TRS is reduced. There are actuarially assumptions on rate of return. So that's causing the slight increase. Then on the healthcare side, our retiree plans are just under 5%. And then our consortium rate increases are around 7.3. So there's some early budget things to look at. Then some other items to look at. Is our sales tax revenue on the, going to maintain or increase? We do have, I believe, a pilot agreement on the horizon. So that could alter our revenues. And next year, we've actually taken a hit on the revenue side with renting of our facilities and limiting some of those options. So will we return to normal and see some of that revenue? And then on the expenditure side, all contracts are settled with their contractual wage increases. Minimum wage, are we going to predict, is that going to go up another 70 cents? Something to look at every January. The building budget allocations, looking at that as part of the formula and planning for some long-term items. With that, I mean, we have all this federal stimulus. We've begun to get those plans out and have postings and have brought some people on board with that. We're going to keep rolling that out, but how do we maintain that as part of the budget process for some of those things? You know, budget's just funding available minus requests and that balance between money and ideas. Next up on the process, you know, I'm looking at gathering our data points for the tax cap calculation over the next month. We'll discuss our long-range planning workshop in January and what, some changes to predictions on that. And then over the next six weeks, really meeting with all the budget stakeholders, all the buildings and departments. Any questions on anything? Quick overview of just what's been going on, on the budget process and where we're at.
Brian, so I know we're getting the, the increased foundation aid. Are you expecting that we've picked up expenses from COVID? There are expenses that are not funded. Are you expecting that a portion of that is going to be, now need to be allocated to expenses that we did not have before, such as even with, you know, the nursing staff and things like that?
So some of that right now, we are currently carrying in the federal stimulus. We have like some COVID lines as part of the COVID, as the federal stimulus allocation for some of the nursing support and some of the nurse contract that we're doing for the testing. That is currently being picked up by the federal stimulus funds and not by our budget. So I, I can't really predict. I wouldn't be surprised if there was some kind of, you know, carrot horse, here's your foundation aid, we want you to do X, Y, and Z to get it type of thing. I wouldn't be surprised if.
Okay. That's what we're hearing on the legislative side, is that they're expecting, they're going to say, but we are, we're giving you this foundation aid now. So you are being funded for.
So now we're going to take this away.
Yeah.
Right, right. So those are some of the things that we're looking, you know, at on, on that side is that even some of those COVID measures, besides beyond the stimulus, they may say, you don't need the stimulus. We're giving you this increased foundation aid.
Yep.
But I know time will tell. Okay. Thank you.
Do the federal funds flow directly to the school district or do they funnel through the state?
No, it goes through the state. Every application we apply for goes directly to NICE's grants, grants finance department and they approve it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Moving on then, if you will, to the tax certurary settlement resolution.
Sure. So we have two tax certuraries to settle this evening. First one up is in the Webster Town Center. It's the commons area, the far side, which used to be home to paychecks and to district office for 18 months. So that challenge has been on the board for a couple of years now. And we're getting to a settlement with them. We're, we're saving with the settlement, a cost avoidance of, had we completed the process of $160,000. So we will be paying some refunds of about $165,000, but that is a very good deal considering if you've ever looked to the, under that plaza, it's pretty dark right now. And that would not bode well for the district or the town if we did take this to a court settlement. So we're proposing that we approve this resolution to accept the settlement between all the parties. Questions on it?
No questions? Then can we have a motion, please, to accept the tax certurary settlement resolution with a COR Holt Road Commons? Linda, second by Janice, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to the second.
Next up is the AMF Bowling Centers on Empire Boulevard. This one goes back actually a little bit farther. It's five years worth of challenges. Smaller assessed value than what we just saw with the retail property. So the impact is not as great, but we, the settlement with refunds of only $14,000 is pretty good in this estimate. So we're recommending that we agree to settle this case considering it's a five-year ongoing. It's one we want to get off of our books. And I think it's a fair settlement from all parties.
Any questions on this resolution? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please, to accept the tax, tax certurary settlement resolution for AMF Bowling Centers? Janice, second by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Brian.
Sure.
And next, the county.
One more.
Intermunicipal agreement regarding.
Yep.
Radio access.
So this one, you might have seen popped up on tentative agendas because we've been working on this with the county for a couple of months now. We're finally at the time where we could have these, this conversation with them in earnest, once we had approval for the bus garage, because this is going to be part of the bus garage project. If you think back to the 2018 vote, we're converting from the analog system to the digital radio system. One of the issues that we've always had is our tower is on top of Spry. And so our radio service provider cannot raise it any higher, cannot, we cannot output it anymore because it gets shot down by the Canadian government because we're close to the lake. So that's always been an issue for us on the old system. So when we were exploring different systems with the digital, based on our conversations and our connections with the county, we're going to hop onto their tower system, solves all that problem. It's been tested. Many of the first responding groups already utilize that system. We know it works. It's, it's a huge benefit to us. So to be able to access, it is a fee, but it will be adable through transportation aid and an ongoing basis. But we do need an intermunicipal agreement between the district and the county to execute that and move forward.
Any questions?
The Monroe County system like this, there's plenty of space for all of these systems to communicate. So if there's ever an emergency district-wide, it's not going to be a problem or anything like that?
Correct. Plenty of space. We could, as a district ourselves, we'd have our own, we have multiple channels that we could, you know, we could create one for a school, one for just all the security personnel. There's different, there's a lot of different options we could do.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Then can we have a motion, please, to accept the county intermunicipal agreement regarding radio access? Janice, second by Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on to board reports, school liaison reports. Monroe County School Board Association. The steering committee meeting was canceled. The executive committee meeting was held. Their offices have moved. Becky Schultz, who has served public education for many decades as a preschool teacher, as a board member in West Arundacoit, and finally as a program director for Monroe County School Board Association, retired. So she was recognized for her service. There are four position papers that will probably try to find a way to share with the public and, and talk about more. One is the role of regents in public education. Another is the New York State Constitution and public education, public education and the federal role in terms of support, not governance, and finally, supporting the emotional well-being of students. So the communications team within Monroe County often works on position papers for issues that are complicated in ways that enable us as school boards to talk more easily about them. So they're, they're very carefully crafted in single-page documents with talking points that, that are very helpful. Moving on to legislative, Jen or Shanna?
Most of the issues that we've, that we've been discussing are, transportation is the biggest one at this point with the pandemic and concerns over the health and safety of transportation officials and drivers. That's been the biggest one. They're continuing to look at CDL changes. I know they just dropped the CDL age to 18, but only for truck drivers. And there was a discussion around the safety and concern if, if that got dropped any further for, for bus drivers. They're continuing to look at funding across the board, the shortage of staff, teachers, classroom aides, everybody from transportation through buildings and grounds.
Food service.
Looking at food service, making sure that we can hire the right people for the job, stay competitive, but not compete with each other within the county and making sure that we're paying fairly as well. So. Anything? Did I miss anything?
No, also just that need to exclude money for COVID-19 testing, any return to stay, test to stay from foundation aid, making sure that that is all covered. Right now, the county is reimbursing the schools. We want to make sure that that stays. Wage compression caused by the minimum wage increase like Brian talked about, that's, that's going to be an issue that's across all the county schools. We're going to be participating in a Zoom meeting with Assemblywoman Lunsford next Tuesday, December 18th. So as these issues that we've talked about across Monroe County, we'll have the opportunity to talk to the legislators about those issues. And so we have that opportunity next Tuesday. We're really happy to see the test to stay option for Monroe County schools, you know, that the county is reimbursing for that. That's going to be huge for helping kids stay in school, especially those that are testing negative. I think that's really important right now from our kids for having missed that time so long. There is a legis, another legislative breakfast, which is right now scheduled for February 12th, but there's no commitment as to who is going to be there. So, you know, whether we'll be able to actually talk to anybody. And then the next meeting for legislative is January 5th.
Great. Thank you both. And labor relations, Linda, Maria?
You got it? Yep, I got it. The topic for this past month was staff retention in trying times. They had a couple of different school districts represented that spoke. One was from Gates Childley and the other one was from Brockport. And I think the most profound thing is the mental health of the staff. And so most of the conversation focused on how do you make your staff members feel valued so they want to stay, make them feel more like a family? So they talked about Brockport did some trick-or-treating for staff members and their families outside. They have family game nights. They've increased funding for their employee assistance programs, providing more mental health avenues that way as well. It's just trying to build more of a community. And also with employees, the, the employees that make the minimum wage, showing them that there, we're also offering benefits. So that is part of your package, that it's not always just that the wage that you're making, there are other benefits in there. So just some strategies with that. In the next meeting, we'll be in, there's no meeting in December. The next meeting will be in January.
Okay. Thank you. And for information exchange, the last presentation we had was about the seal of civic readiness and the Holly Central School District piloted a program where students could participate. And it is designed to encourage civic engagement, but it's also another pathway to graduation. And it had a lot of different opportunities for students to participate in ways that built their, their skills along curricular guidelines. So Holly was, had been very successful with it. And so we'll, we'll see where it goes. It would be a challenge in a district of our size, but they were able to be successful with it. And executive committee, I did provide a report on behalf of MCSBA already. Moving on to our standing district committees, audit. Mike, yep. And policy?
No update.
No update.
And budget advise, oh, I'm sorry.
Policy is going to be a little bit longer.
For the full, full update. I got an, an update from a couple of weeks ago saying they're still working through and it, it's going to be a, probably a year-long process.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Budget advisory will be coming along. We'll all be able to participate. Strategic planning.
Quick question on budget processing. Is that going to be remote this year or is that going to be in person?
So I think we might have some new ideas to discuss with you guys at the retreat. Now Brian and I have batted out some ideas with thought exchange and doing a couple different mediums.
different mediums this year, perhaps, really trying to find the best way to connect with the community, so.
Or to get the input, and also do the education side of it, because we've always, we've always looked at budget advisory more on the education side, and we want to be able to do both the education side, but also want to be able to get, gather some feedback.
Okay, and just for the benefit of the, of parents in the audience, if you've never been to a budget advisory meetings, which many of you probably have not, because I never did either, one of the, I really do encourage you to attend, because it's your opportunity to talk to the school district about what's important to you as parents. They talk about, you know, what, what do you think are the most, the issues that are most important right now? It gives you an idea, because it's very extreme, it's so complicated, the funding for schools, and it helps you understand where that money is coming from, how the different decisions that we make are going to affect that, how the tax cap affects that, and gives, allows you to give that feedback to your district as well, as to what's important to you. So, I really encourage you to join those meetings as much as you never thought you'd want to, it really is a great opportunity to, to participate and understand more about where that money is coming from, so, as that information comes out, make sure you pay attention and take note of when those are going to take place.
And strategic planning? The core team just met a short while ago, and the survey will be sent in April, where every different aspect of our community is asked questions, and the data that's gleaned from that will help us really ascertain the impact of last year, the last year and a half, in every facet of education about our students, as well as how we're equipped to move forward. So, we're reviewing the questions on the survey, and they're very carefully designed for a longitudinal look over time, and this is part of the strategic planning process that's been in place since 2010, so, do have a very strong track record of, of learning from what our constituents have to say. And then, the diversity, equity, and inclusion subcommittee met, informed, agreed upon norms for the group, and participated in group circles to get to know one another and gain an understanding of the work through the culturally responsive sustaining education framework. It's an excellent first meeting, led by Colleen and Terry and some individuals, and very much looking forward to where the work of the subcommittee takes us. Moving on to school committee, school community committees. Wen, you just had a meeting. Oh, Maria, okay.
Well, the biggest thing that Wen has been addressing and discussing lately is the passing of the bill of legalizing marijuana in New York State, and Wen has recommended that the town of Webster opt out of retail dispensaries and onsite communication, so, or, sorry, consumption. So, that's what we've been working on mostly, and forging relationships with community businesses.
It's still the case that if they opt out, they can always opt in later on.
Yes.
But if you opt in, you cannot opt out later on, so that's one of the reasons why they're, like, starting out.
After December 31st, after December 31st, you can't opt out.
Oh, after which date? What was the, did you give a date?
December, after, Webster will not be able to opt out after December 31st.
Okay. Okay.
That's good. And fire?
We're going to be meeting this week, this month with the steering committee, and then we'll be planning for a larger group meeting again in January, so we'll have more information hopefully in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. And PTSA, so we all have information to share on behalf of all our buildings, do you want to just work away around the table?
So, I have Clem North update for them, renovations have continued in the library, LED lighting has been installed, installed in the hallways, and the foyer is being redesigned to include fire safety doors. They had parent-teacher conferences were held, and teachers were really happy to have many different options to offer parents, so they were able to offer in-person, or virtual, or on phone conferences, so they were happy to be able to have so many different ways to reach out to parents and make sure that they were touching base with their teachers. Clem North, as we saw earlier, they held that stack cans for Hope House, where they collected the cans for Hope House, their goal was 500, so, and at the time, they only had like a couple more days left, they were at 460, so the fact that they got to 800 is pretty impressive. I love to see the schools giving back to their communities, that's one of the things I love hearing about. Laura Blue and Sarah Welsh provided a presentation on multi-tiered systems of support, which is great, you know, the board, we just had our workshop on that on September 28th, so it's great to see schools educating parents as well on those support systems. That's one of the things I love to see at PTSA meetings, is where we're offering education to parents about what's going on in schools and, and things that they otherwise might not know about. They also had another guest speaker, Kristi Roushi, who presented book recommendations from an anti-racist lens, and so, she went through and talked about different books in different ways that you can help contribute. So, one of the things that I really loved is that giving books to teachers and in their classrooms that represent different types of cultures, so that students in those classrooms will have those books and see themselves represented, and it, it's a way for you to give back to your community, so that you're giving those books and, and helping kids, and it's not all on the teachers.
State Road actually meets next Monday, so I'll have more information after that.
Um, let's see, I had Schrader, it was November 17th, was a really busy night, there were three PTSA meetings that I attended. The great thing about Schrader is each month Stacy Peters is trying to bring in different speakers, trying to get more community, or more school members to, to come to the meetings. So, this past month, she had invited the school's Green Club to come and talk about their composting that they set up, and so, they're taking waste from the greenhouse and also organic waste from the cafeteria, and they're putting them into the composters, and the hope is to use it into the soil in the courtyards when they start to do their springtime planning. So, that was really great, there's about 20 students that are involved in, in that club, so they were there. And then, also, the ATAD, which is the Association of Teenage Diplomats, there was a foreign exchange student, he was actually from Mallorca, that gave a presentation and talked about being an exchange student in Rochester, and how much he has enjoyed being here, it's quite different where he is, it's very warm, and, and it's wonderful, and here it's pretty cold, but very much enjoying it. There was also a representative there that evening, and they're looking for families to be host families in, in, in the Rochester area, and she also talked about our own students being able to go over to European countries for a year, for a year, you could do it your gap year, or you could do it in the summer, so that was a great, those were great presentations. Schrader is also having two fundraisers that are going on right now, it's the busy season, and people aren't able to often cook, so this week, if you go to De Bellas, I know there's a lot of schools that are doing these fundraisers, Schrader's doing De Bellas, if you go to De Bellas and you give the secret passcode, which is SchraderPTSA, 20% of your sale will be donated back to Schrader. They also do Woody Acres on Harris Road, they are donating 5% of the sales of your Christmas trees and wreaths. They talked a lot about World Kindness Day and how much of a success it was, they had rock painting, they, they gave out candies to the kids, it was, it was really a great day for them, they also had a sock drive for Hope House. And another great thing, and I think it was touched on in the, in the report with UPK, Stacy and some of the clubs teamed up with UPK, and they decorated the windows around Schrader Southview Drive, you'll see snowmen that the UPK students made, there's snowflakes on some of the windows that some of the seniors and, and juniors have painted as well, so it's really great to see that. Their next meeting will be in January, it hasn't been announced yet. Also, that evening was the Spry PTSA, they talked much, so much about the Veterans Dinner and how impactful that is, we've been able to attend it over the years, and it, the connection between the veterans and the students is always so awesome. So, they're looking, they are looking forward to next year and hoping that maybe it could go back into the cafeteria for that. School 17 donations are being accepted again this year, the students at Spry, Schrader, and Plank South have adopted the school, they do it each year, they, they provide toys, they provide, they're called Parties in a Box, where it's like they bring pizzas in for each classrooms, so that's awesome for this time of year. They have a fundraiser also at the newly opened Nourish on December 16th, that is in, next to Hobby Lobby, their hours are 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, they serve smoothies, protein drinks, and teas, they actually have a tea that's named the Warrior Tea and the Titan Tea. If you mention the Spry PTSA, they will receive 15% of the sales. Sorry, December 16th, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And then, also, that day was the Plank South PTSA meeting, Plank South is trying a couple, they're changing the hours of their meetings to try to see if they can, if a different time would bring new and different families, they're going to poll some of their membership, I think in January, to see if there is a better time. But they had it at noon, they actually had a pretty good, good showing, many people. So, let's see, like I said before, they're doing School 17, the families have signed up to purchase their toys, they're actually having the fifth graders wrap the toys, usually it's the parents do it in the evening, but they thought to get the, the kids involved in it as well, they'd have the fifth graders do some wrapping, and they'll probably do a great job, you're right, exactly. The book fair, which is usually held in the fall, will now be held in February, with all the renovations in the library just being completed, they thought it felt better to push it off for a little bit. They are also looking into virtual author visits, they found that they're much more cost-effective, so they actually may be able to afford two instead of one, then they could do a primary, and, and so, younger learners and older learners, so they will look into that for the springtime. Also touched a little bit on it in the UPK, they do, Plank South has started buddy classrooms, where the older learners move into the younger learners, and that was really great, there were a couple of students that, there was a student that was principal for the day, and he actually got on and talked about how great it is to be in a buddy class, and to connect with that person, and then when you're on the playground, you see that buddy, and it, it really is impactful for the kids. They're also bringing back sleepytime book Zooms, the, the kids really loved that, when a staff member would Zoom and read a nighttime story, so they'll bring that back this month, they're just trying to figure out a time that won't interfere with bedtime routines. And again, there's another fundraiser, if you do not want to cook, that will be tomorrow at Chipotle from 5:00 to 9:00, the proceeds will go to the fifth grade for all their year-end events, and their next meeting will be in January.
That's it, thank you. I think there was an evening where we had four meetings, that we were jumping on and off Google meets, but otherwise, it wouldn't be possible. So, for Schlegel Road, a lot of holiday planning, they're making cards for three different nursing homes and collecting non-perishable items for Hope House, the Gaga pit is done, and that is big news, and books for Bingo, they're trying to figure out the logistics of making that work, and that's in early January.
Clem South, they had a very successful collection of hygiene products and non-perishable food items for the Goodness Initiative, that was through November, and then they also have some fundraisers coming up, I think I missed the UNOS, that was last Friday, Panera is this Friday, no?
Chipotle.
Chipotle is this Friday, is there a Panera?
Then Panera next week.
Panera is.
And then you'll lickety over break.
Thank you. I had you lickety, that one I wasn't going to forget, but yeah, so Chipotle is this Friday, Panera is next week. And who doesn't need more ice cream over the holiday break? And their next meeting is January 19th.
As far as DeWitt, Thomas, and Willink, most of the stuff was already covered through the presentations, there's no meeting at Willink in December, and we'll have to check to have the next meeting posted. The next DeWitt meeting is on the 13th, which is next week, and Thomas doesn't have one until January.
And Plank Road North, I think one of the nice things they did for World Kindness Day was to have each of the students make a compliment, offer some gratitude, or a kind gesture to someone that they know, hopefully, parents got a lot of those, but they said it went very well. Brian, they're very happy that the library is proceeding ahead of schedule, so they wanted to make sure, I thanked you for that, and they're all excited about the libraries, and we saw them as we went around, so that's great. They are starting the process to honor the fifth-grade students at Plank Road North, to try and make it a bigger deal, and hopefully, some of the events will be open to family and guests, they offered fifth-grade T-shirts now, and then they have a drone, and they're going to take a picture of the group outside, so I think they got that done by now. And then, one other thing, one of the classrooms, they made 99 birthday cards to help a World War II vet celebrate his 99th birthday, and I think it's just another reminder of how our students and the school districts give back to the community, and it was just a wonderful gesture. And then, last, a couple of last things, they are doing a number of fundraising things, I won't get into it, like some of the other ones you heard, but most of that money is going towards the fifth-grade class to hopefully, hopefully give them a good send-off, and the next meeting will be in January.
Thank you.
One quick shout-out to Chris Howard from Willink, who was awarded with the Golden Apple Award, it was touched on earlier, but a segment aired today on Channel 8 at 5:30 today about him, and I think that's really exciting, so I just wanted to give a quick shout-out to him for.
Yeah, it was great.
Music, yeah.
Excellent.
My children have had him, and he's wonderful.
Yep, no, it was great, it was a great honor for him, but Erin and I had a chance to go in and actually be part of it too, which was fun, it was really neat to see, it was great to see him and the surprise that, you know, when you get that surprise, like, what are you, what's, what's the news station coming in here for?
Yeah, right, and he relatively.
Krista Gross helped us. Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
It was, it was one of his students that nominated him, so that's always special, when a student nominates you for it.
Yeah, that's great, wonderful.
Excellent, thank you, everybody. Moving on to the consent agenda. Superintendent recommending approval of minutes, personnel actions, recommendations in committee for special education meetings, pre-special education meetings, and a trip to Japan, can we have a motion, please, to pass the, to, to pass the consent agenda?
So moved.
Janice, in a second, by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to the visitor speaking time portion of our meeting, I know there are six individuals who have signed up to speak, hand it over to Cindy.
Kristina Bell.
Either way. Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so I am going to touch on a topic that is, it can be a little bit sensitive and uncomfortable, but I really want to raise awareness, and it is around the culturally responsive sustaining education framework that the New York State has established. Embedded in it is critical race theory, diversity, equity, inclusion, social, emotional learning, all things that we've heard about before. But today, I, I really want to take this to a somewhat different place, where a lot of times, we are seeing around the nation, that, that culturally responsive sustaining education, or, you know, some form of that can kind of, it goes in a direction that maybe it wasn't intended to from the beginning. So, the topic that I want to speak about is on the sexualization of our children, that it is sneaking its way under the guise of diversity, equity, inclusion, social, emotional learning, or any culturally responsive framework. I know that sounds really far-fetched, but if you, if you take a look around. if you, if you take a look around other states who have adopted this framework, you can kind of see throughout the years where it has progressed, and it's very concerning. So that's why I wanted to bring it up. So I know that we already are. Webster is already adopting this framework. And, you know, like I said, on the surface, its initial stages can appear to encourage diversity, inclusion. But if we look at other schools around the nation, there's, there's things that are being taught where teachers are teaching children that they can be any identity they choose to be at age, young ages, before they can even decide if it, if it is, you know, make decisions that are dangerous, like, you know, I don't know, children, you know, you can't walk across the street without looking, or consume poisons, or run with a pencil in your hand. But, you know, at young ages, they're being told that they can choose any identity they want when they can't even make simple decisions. This introduction to sexuality has led to identity transitioning many times without the consent of parents, has led to sexual assault. We've already seen this occurring right in Virginia. Pornography in the schools, pedophilia, grooming, teaching on how to masturbate, et cetera. For those of you who do not know this, Webster High School, and I must imagine that maybe you guys, some of you may not know either, Schroeder High School already has pornographic material in its library as of June 2021, containing these very things that I listed, one of which is called "All Boys Aren't Blue" by George M. Johnson. So my question is, you know, when did this become okay to have or teach in school, you know, these pornographic materials, or, you know, even have them in there? When did indoctrination and sexual grooming become okay in school? When did it become okay for pornography to be readily available to students in school? It's criminal, and it can easily be overlooked based on the framework that's in place, because it doesn't look like that on the surface at all, especially when you're first introducing it. But then, as years go on, other things make their way in. Now, I, you know, I'm always one to assume positive intent, because many times we can be blindsided by things that are presented to us. So I'm assuming here, you know, that you would never want to bring these types of things to our children, and I'm assuming that the books in the library were only there because a thorough analysis of them was not performed. Therefore, I'm here to open your eyes. I'm here to urge you to dig deep into the curriculum that is being forced upon our schools and upon our children. I am warning you that the framework that has been developed is divisive and destructive. I will just provide one example of what occurred when I was digging into the CRSE framework. One of the resources used to build the framework was an article referring to a workshop for deconstructing whiteness. Now, when I went to the resource, I discovered that the authors also had an entire section dedicated to sex education. One article highlighted an image of what appeared to be a child's hands bound with rope entitled Harvard hosts "Hit Me Baby One More Time BDSM Tutorial Orgies 101 Anal Sex Workshop." This is very disturbing. It goes on to mention numerous workshops that Harvard hosts on the topic of Sex Week and supplying free sex toys to those who attend. Is this the type of resource the New York State education system is okay with using to build a framework for our children? Please take the time to determine if this is right for our children. Are we headed down a path of destroying them and encouraging sexual abuse, pedophilia, and sex trafficking, all for the sake of calling ourselves accepting? This may sound extreme, but it is not. Please research what has been happening in Virginia and other states. For the sake of our children, I pray that we are not willing to sacrifice them for ideologies that will strategically bring about victimization of our children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Dan Dermisich.
Well, thank you for having me. I'm a parent of three graduates of Webster Schools and also a granddaughter. So I'm here to share some ideas with you in terms of racial justice and equity. I'm a member of the Rochester Coalition for Public Education, a group of educators that advocate for progressive, research-based education. And also, I've, well, I've had 43 years of experience in the Rochester City School District, the last 23 as principal of School Without Walls. Hi, Jennifer. Nice to see you here. So, I'll be, try and be direct and very quick with this, and I hope it raises some questions with you. Structural, institutional, individual, and unconscious racism has been a prominent part of our nation's history since 1619 and continues to be throughout our nation, even in the Webster community and school district. Structural and institutional examples include the fact that few people of color live in Webster, and as a result, few students of color attend our schools. Why? One reason could be to examine the history of racial discrimination, of local redlining mortgage policies, and the denial of World War II GI Bill of Rights aimed at Black Americans and other people of color. Building wealth through homeownership has been denied to many people of color. Local education examples include those unintended but insensitive classroom activities that have humiliated students of color and caused some students to leave some classrooms with false understandings of American history and culture. Where is the professional development that all Webster educators need in order to help Webster students develop more accurate understandings of American history, sensitivity to other cultures, and the impact of racism on not only people of color, but white folks as well? I'm sure we all want our students to graduate as citizens who support democratic values, are critical thinkers, are racially and culturally sensitive, anti-racist citizens who are courageous enough to take action when they see or experience racism. We're all familiar with the recent series of racially insensitive incidents in Pittsburgh, and the possibility of similar incidents occurring in Webster. So what are we going to do to help our students grow and develop into the kind of altruistic individuals who can be role models for leading our community and our nation? I propose the following as a start. Hire an experienced person as Webster's Chief Equity Officer, preferably a person of color, to do the following. A, assist the Personnel Department in recruiting and hiring more teachers and administrators of color who are creative, sensitive, and knowledgeable in meeting the needs of all of our students, especially those who have difficulty adjusting to school, and those who are experiencing poverty and trauma. B, assist all schools in designing professional development for all teachers and administrators focusing on bias, racism, and the cultural integration of social justice, social emotional, and multicultural perspectives into K through 12 teaching and learning. C, serve as an ombudsman for hearing and mediating concerns of discrimination from students and staff. D, serve as an organizer and facilitator of parents, student, and community groups who wish to focus on issues of social emotional development and social and racial justice issue in our schools. And E, be open in assisting other initiatives proposed by students, staff, parents, and community for advancing positive race and cultural relationships. I also believe that Webster would be demonstrating more support for racially integrated schools if they were to agree to pay for the student transportation costs of urban suburban transfer program. I think you know that the Rochester City School District is considering eliminating the program because of costs and the problems that they're having to fund and meet other needs of students. I think it'd be the least that Webster and other participants in the urban suburban program could do. And lastly, if you would support a proposal by the Great Schools for All, an organization in Monroe County, to be a part of an inter-district magnet school initiative that would bring students from all voluntary districts into the city or into a suburban school district that could support that. I think if the Webster School District would consider doing some of these things, I think that they could be a model. Not that you're already not a model in some areas, but in this issue of racial equity and justice, I think you could become a model for meeting the needs of all students in New York State. If any of you have questions, I know now is not the time, because you've got other people who want to speak, but I'd be happy to meet with you individually, or a small group, or with one of your committees to talk further about these issues. I also served as a member of the Rochester and Monroe County Race and Structural Equity Commission on their education committee. So I'm familiar with their recommendations, and some of these things are implicit within what I just recommended. So, thank you very much, and I hope I raised some questions with you and some concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy Stornello.
Hello. Thank you for inviting me here today this evening. My name is Amy Stornello, a lifelong member of Webster and a graduate from Webster Thomas High School in 1993. Hello. As you can see, I'm stunning because I'm profoundly deaf. I would not be sitting here today if it wasn't for the deport of having a speech and language pathologist, a teacher of the deaf, a note taker, and a sign language interpreter in my classes from Webster's. High school was not easy for me. High school was not easy for me, and I did not feel like I fit in being one of two deaf students in this school. I've gone on to college and have earned my bachelor's and master's degree, and I am gainfully employed. I am a taxpayer and a contributor to society, thanks to the investment of our tax dollars in me. My husband and I have two remaining daughters, which I'm sure Glenn knows, and they're both attending this school. I am a person who reads a lot and observes the world around me, because I rely on visual cue. I know what it's like to be discriminated against because of my deafness, and I value our conversations about diversity as a member of a marginalized group. I can empathize with the 17% of our minority students must feel being in this district. However, as we all raise our children to be aware, empathetic, caring, and being the poor of young people who perceive others to be different, then they learn how to be an ally because of their mother, to help ensure that their classmates have equal opportunity to participate. But the truth is, the world is not equal, and there are still challenges within the school system in preparing our young people to be successful adults. We need a thoughtfully designed curriculum and approach to learning and awareness of our history, of how to have these types of dialogue, how to approach these sensitive topics, and to have the productive and essential conversations which are sorely needed. Webster is a white-dominated, privileged community. We cannot be colorblind. Though you can say, "I don't see color," our Black and Brown friends, community members, are struggling, and we must acknowledge this. I am educating myself each and every day, and it is a lot to learn, but I am seeing things a bit more clearly. But it would be hard for me to teach you as a white person. But I know that there is one thing you can do as we strive to do better. I am asking this board to please consider establishing a diversity, equity, and inclusion assistance superintendent petition for the Webster School District. Having someone within the ranks will help us all better understand the struggles and challenges, and motivate us all to do more, to be better human beings, and to give our BIPOC students another role model within the Webster community, because we don't have any. Representation matters. We need more diversity in our teaching faculty and staff and administration. Webster will continue to grow and become even more diverse. Now's the time to be proactive and embrace all the perspective, as we are valued, and that makes us all better neighbors. Remember, a safe space isn't enough. We must provide a brave space for us all. Thank you for your time.
David Ruiz.
Good evening, everybody. All politics is local. Right here from the board begins or is seen the same basics that you see in a county, you see in Albany and DC. And there is the good, the bad, and the ugly of it in governance. So lately, the big thing that we hear as far as negative or the bad is systemic racism, white supremacy. You know my take on that. I've spoken before. There's a difference of opinion on how to deal with that, but most, all of us agree that racism is bad, and let's deal with it. But it's just how. At any rate, that's a big word now. But to me, it's abuse of power. When someone says white supremacy, well, okay, it's on the skin, but it's abuse of power, thinking of yourself better than someone else, thinking you stand on a higher moral ground, having a better purpose, or because of your position, an us-versus-them attitude. And one of the key things is, is the denial of all the above. So our district has the good, and you had two hours of it tonight, and there's, and, but it also has some of the bad. I will say this, that I've heard people criticize other districts, but I've, it's been said of Webster, that you are courteous and respectful to differing opinions, okay? And that's what I have felt from you. However, having said that, I've seen some things that are kind of like, have that supremacist negative thing. The same thing, you know, not as bad, but in certain areas, and I will explain what I mean by that. One of the areas is in the area of transparency and getting information. And I know some of you have been trying to address that. And again, you're very good, most of the time, all right? But some of the time, I think there's a problem. And one of the main issues is CRT's a big thing, okay? That's something that should be inclusive of all opinions, I would think. It's not like the old days, well, how are we going to teach algebra, or run the football team, or teach music? You know, this is more about, geez, do you tell a third grader, how do you want to be known as? A girl, a boy? And this is put before you by teachers. And I didn't see one person question it, but actually condoned it and say, "Cool, progressive." But at any rate, that's a big issue, you know, telling someone that young, what do you want to be known as? You've got to admit, that's new. So, or asking them, asking a fifth grader, who might be of Italian or Spanish descent, or telling them, or coming home saying, "I kind of was taught today that Columbus, sailing for the Spanish, was a bad dude." Now, again, we know he did some bad stuff, but that was the blunt impact to this particular student. So there's reason for discussion and bringing people in. So based on that, I was trying to do a little research, and I made a FOIL request for your plan of inclusion, for your, a plan of shared decision-making. According to the state school board, every school board must have a place in district, a district plan, so that participation by teachers, parents, and administrators, and school-based planning and shared decision-making. And there is a code for it. The adapted plan, the adopted plan that every school board must have, must be made available to the public, and must be filed with the district superintendent and the commissioner of education within of education within 30 days of its adoption. So I made the FOIL request. The FOIL request says, no such document. Your request is fully denied. So I'm led to think, well, all right, number one, you're not compliant with the state education department. I mean, you're telling me the whole CRT thing is another push from New York State, but yet are we picking and choosing what we're going to do and not do? So I don't know. I don't know what the story is. Do we have poor records? Can't find it? You know, I don't know. You tell me. Or is this a supremacist power thing? You know, here is a guy, well, let's shut him, eh, don't give it to him. I don't know. I have asked for a certification of the response, which is really a doubling down where you go and look and say, you're right, we do not have it. Okay. And the other thing is, another time, I also, you guys had a retreat, and board, somebody put before you the Open Government Committee in Albany, that you can have retreats and you can discuss, for instance, how to come about getting school plans, a district plan. You can team build and all that, but what you cannot do during that meeting where no public is invited, where there's no agenda, you cannot actually make the plans. I'm not sure if that's what happened, but you guys had a retreat, and it seems like you made, for the most part, you did team building, but you also dabbled in school business that you did not allow us to come. So I foiled a request to see your agenda, and lo and behold, there was no agenda, but there certainly was a timeline that you guys went by, which really was an agenda, but I was denied that. Why? What's the big deal? You know, is this supremacist? I'm just questioning. I'm sad to see that because it's not, it's not looking good. The other thing is, I tell people, you know, like you say, we don't teach CRT. And then I ask, well, what is CRT? And you say, well, we can't tell you. Now, I say that because we have foiled requests to show us, what's your, what's your teaching material for training this implementation? It's not a curriculum, I understand, but what, show us some of the material, show us some of the teachers you hired are speakers. Guess what? Guess what you denied? You denied that, that's not my particular one, but you denied that. I also denied, did you have, I asked, I foiled, did you guys have any shared decision-making like in PTA and that kind of thing to make, come up with some of these things? You know, show me where you did some shared decision-making in the, denied, no record of any of it, you know? It's a little bit frustrating, and there were seven, seven other denials from people that I know that just, you know, either for no record or for technicalities, you know? So it doesn't look good, and I don't think it's necessary, you know? I know you have another retreat coming up, there's no agenda, God bless you in this, man, it's Christmas time. You guys work hard, very hard. You deserve whatever you're going to be doing there. But I just pray that if you try to inject business in on it and not have the public, that somebody stand up to whoever is leading in that direction, say, this is wrong. I've been on a board, and I had a letter from Albany on a certain issue we were dealing with and how to deal with it if you want to comply with open government. And you know what the board did? Said, we don't want to read it. We don't want to see it. Again, that's abuse of power. That's a little bit systemic. I don't wish to see you in that entrenchment. I wish you the power to get over that and to open up and change course, you know, on these little issues. Truly. So with that, blessings and Merry Christmas to everybody.
Creating more inclusive and equitable systems requires efforts by all stakeholders to disavow societal scourges, including racism, sexism, homophobia, transphobia, xenophobia, and ableism. Webster Central School District is working both within our schools and with the broader community to dismantle the barriers that have resulted in disproportionality and inequitable outcomes for students. That's an excerpt from the Webster Central School District vision. I'm here to talk about our immediate need for a leader and department for diversity, equity, and inclusion. We have dedicated people doing good work on the task force, however, it isn't enough. Let's survey the argument, the why. The district vision, as well as the district priorities for 2021, all reflect areas that need substantial support from a comprehensive DEI plan. If we stand by these words that I read, then we must create this position and department. Without it, we are setting up well-meeting teachers and administrators who are trying to do the work, who want to do the work, but aren't qualified to do the work, to make huge damaging mistakes, as we've seen in our own county, country, and district. The news covers some of these failures, but many go unreported. Staff are trying, but they are not equipped to do the job, nor are they given sufficient resources, and the result is harm to students and families. In a 2019 report, Webster had zero minority teachers defined by race during the 2017, 18, and 2018, 19 school year. This is unacceptable. There was no current data at the time, but I can't imagine numbers have changed dramatically. We are over-reliant on community members to do the work for the district. Parents are volunteering huge chunks of their time, supporting others to resolve equity issues created by the district. The position would establish a pathway for families to get assistance that isn't unpaid time by others who themselves are already experiencing harm. Tasha Potter was out July 1st of this year. That's six months ago, so what are we waiting for? We cannot wait anymore. The be patient rhetoric has been spewed for generations with little progress. Why must we work at the speed of those who are slowest to wake up? Why are we hesitating because of disingenuous, illogical criticism, and fear-mongering nonsense? The work is hard, and we cannot do it without a skilled, experienced leader who has the power to engage in tough conversations and create change at a systems level. I typically deride those who quote Dr. King, as his radical work is often sanitized and whitewashed by those seeking to manipulate his true message for their own unscrupulous goals. However, this quote resonates today. We come to this hallowed spot to remind America of the fierce urgency of now. There is no time to engage in the luxury of cooling off or to take the tranquilizing drug of gradualism. Now is the time to make real the promises of democracy. Now is the time to make real the promises of Webster School District. Gradualism is dangerous. It is harm, is a checked box, it is prioritizing our discomfort over the true suffering of others. Now for the what. This position must be cabinet-level, an assistant superintendent, and not a director, chair, or task force leader. They need to be in the room where big decisions are made. DEI work is not to be done in the silo. It must be embedded in and guide the framework for how we redesign and structure the district. The position must have power within the hierarchy, or else it will be ineffective, an ineffective figurehead. The department should impact policy and practice within all areas: human resources, staff education, curriculum development, discipline, community relations, mental health, and special education. Anything less than an assistant superintendent significantly diminishes the impact. They must have the power and freedom to call out racism, prejudice, and injustice that occurs at the individual and systems level. They must have the ability to name the problem and identify solutions. They must have adequate staffing and funding. Pay must be comparable to other assistant superintendents and continually budgeted for. It cannot be temporary. The who. If I was hiring for a volleyball coach, I would need someone with experience playing and coaching volleyball. When selecting an OBGYN, most women choose women. When people in marginalized groups need support, they have increased participation and engagement with those who share their authentic experiences and perspectives. Therefore, we need people who are BIPOC, openly queer, disabled, to fill these roles. All children need to see marginalized groups in leadership. Representation matters. To do this, we need to be intentional by recruiting truly diverse candidates. This does not mean lowering the bar. It means opening the door wider and making the invitation more welcoming to all. In summary, we need this DEI leadership for all the reasons we see and so many that we can't yet identify. We need to create a district where everyone will feel welcome to join our community, where we plan ahead and not treat people as afterthoughts. Now is the time to make real promise, the real, the promises of Webster School District. Thank you.
Michelle Anderson?
Thanks for allowing me to come and speak. I'm sure you're all exhausted and want to go home. I'll keep this brief. From social justice to critical race theory and from advocacy and activism campaigns to planned action weeks, teachers and schools nationwide are abandoning neutrality in the classroom, embracing political agendas and partisan aims, and expecting students to get on board. Meanwhile, students with doubts or misgivings decline to voice objections due to fears of lowered grades, impacted college recommendation letters, social ostracism, cancellation, public shaming, ridicule, and other formal and informal means of correcting them and making them toe the ideological line. Excuse me. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights. Among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. What has happened to that most sacred tenet of our society? The United States of America has been hijacked by forces so destructive. They have brought the world to its knees at least twice since 1913. And like any malignant growth, unless dealt with definitively and without hesitation, they will reemerge when the environment allows, as it is now. It is every citizen's responsibility to ensure the healthy function of our republic. When it is left to chance, we allow ourselves and our children to become victims of aberrant ideologies whose only goal is the destruction of our society. Recently, I have become aware of instances of students being harassed, intimidated, assaulted, and singled out by other students, a teacher, and a school district principal. As a resident and taxpayer of Webster for 20 years, I want to know why these tactics of horror are being allowed to occur. Why is a young male student verbally assaulted by a female student and then hit in the head with her, with her lunchbox, only to be told he is racist by the principal and expelled from school? If that isn't shocking enough, his younger brother was admonished by the same principal who told the younger brother that if he is caught talking to female students of color, my words, the actual words used by the principal were black girls, he too would be expelled for being a racist. Why in a classroom of seven-year-olds are the white children forced to stand up and apologize to their classmates of color for being white supremists? Why are students in the Webster Central School District given questionnaires that ask, have you ever had oral sex? Have you ever engaged in anal sex? Are the Webster School District employees responsible for these incidents willing to sign a sworn affidavit to the effect that they were given express permission to give direction and make such statements and provide the questionnaires to the students? I ask the board to take responsibility for the actions of Webster School District employees. If you are unwilling or unable to do so, please tender your resignations immediately. Before we adjourn for the evening, I have a brief message. We want to take a moment to share thoughts of gratitude, resilience, and grace. We are grateful for the commitment and dedication that is shown every day by staff who rise to meet the challenge of educating this community's children in the midst of a pandemic. This has been a very challenging time for public education from many perspectives, yet the significance of your work may never be more important. The resilience shown by everyone in this district is truly remarkable. Additional challenges will arise, especially now as we find ourselves indoors, and the one Webster team is up to the challenge. The lessons that are taught, whether planned or unplanned, whether inside or outside the classrooms, include ways to exemplify tolerance and kindness so that we remind ourselves to stay the course and lead by example. We wish everyone grace to believe in the hope that the hard work and dedication now will reap positive results in the months to come. Grace to know that while we wish some challenges would disappear, we know that important things matter and always will. We believe that we are fortunate and will persevere. We believe we have an outstanding staff and school community. We know that we are grateful for all of you. We wish you holidays that are happy, safe, healthy, and full of grace. Thank you. And with that, can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Janice, second by Shana. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all. Have a nice evening.